All right, the time is now seven thirty and I'd like to call our monthly meeting to order. Jen, can you proceed with the roll call please?
Sure, trustee Doherty here, trustee Giedtke there, trustee Humphries.
Here.
Trustee Stapleton there, and president.
Here, thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome our visitor, Ed. Thank you very much for joining us at our meeting. There'll be time to speak in a few minutes. Okay, we're now on to agenda item number four, approval of last month's minutes. I had one comment on the minutes from last month. But we can either, I'll put this out there and then we can either leave it or depending on the conversation. In 8A, the discussion about compensation philosophy. In the middle, it says, "Raver commented on a portion of the philosophy and made a recommendation," and then it goes into the detail. I think, I didn't go back to look at the video, but I think it would be more accurate if my memory serves me correctly, that Raver commented on a portion of the philosophy and Humphries made a recommendation to change. That we ultimately, that was my recollection, but we can either leave it or I wanted Dave to get the credit that he was due in making the recommendation. So it's in the middle, you can look it up.
I actually think it was a combined effort.
That's what it was, that's why I wasn't sure exactly how.
So I wrote these up, so yeah, I think it was a combined effort. I think he made the recommendation that to change. And I think he brainstormed kind of and off to that.
Okay.
I'm not going to the matter with this.
Okay. I'm not either, I just wanted to make it.
Do you want to make a change?
No, no, let's leave it at that.
Okay.
I wanted Dave to have the opportunity there.
To claim that one.
Yes. It was a joint effort.
It was.
All right, does anyone have any other questions or comments on the minutes? All right, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes that has been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, we have approved last month's minutes. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters.
Doing great. As you can see, on the revenue side, the first portion of the property tax has been posted now. So the revenue part is looking a lot better. And then on the expense side, everything seems to be on track. There really wasn't anything in the invoices that I was going to point out unless you have any questions.
And since we're effectively halfway through the year, that's kind of what I was looking for, is that we're under fifty percent. I think we're at forty-three percent in the aggregate.
Yeah.
Fifty-one percent on the revenue side and forty-three percent on the expenditure side, which is.
Which is about right for us at this time of the year.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented?
I will move to, or I will motion, so move the financial matters as presented.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Jen, could you please provide the roll call?
Trustee Doherty, you have trustee Giedtke there.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries. Yes. Trustee Stapleton.
Yes, thank you very much. The financial matters as presented have been approved. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Ed, any comments? Okay, we're now on to agenda item number seven, public comment on other library business. Any comments on other library business?
Since you asked.
Yes.
This is something I bring up periodically. I think it would be good for the board to think about, now that we're coming into the budgeting season, planning cycle, think about some specific goals that you'd like to see and be able to say next year the library is better at this. And I'm trying to think of something concrete, but it's, you know, I have, I'm less interested. I don't really have an agenda to say, well, I think you ought to have a more comprehensive movie collection or something like that. I mean, that certainly could be a goal. It could be a higher percent, you know, a specific percentage of the population of Downers Grove is actively using the library. But I think setting a specific goal that is more than just operational, we're going to replace the air conditioner, we're going to upgrade things, something like that, I think is a good exercise for the board to think about and say, what would we do that would actually make the library better, make a difference going forward? And then fold it into the planning process, the budgeting process.
Help me understand, how is that different from our strategic planning process? Where we set multi-year plans, goals, objectives? And then review them annually and/or more? And I'm just trying to understand your recommendation.
Yeah, my recollection of the strategic plan was somewhat broad in terms of the parameters of it. Like I couldn't pick a specific metric and say, this is going to be different five years from now than it is now. That's what I'm talking about, it's something that's much more specific. Ideally, it would be something measurable, even if we could say it was this and it's now this. But it's a way of describing the library that's going to be different.
There is a update to the strategic plan that was included in the board materials, which and it's been a while since I've looked at the strategic plan as well until this meeting. But we did, we started with kind of the big picture items and then you'll see that there's some very specific, I'm thinking about track.
We should all be talking about those.
We were engaging in the community, with the community.
So I should say, I had a similar question. I didn't think it was kind of dedicated to all of the strategic, I hadn't been here for the first time on strategic planning. I don't think it equates to the last, you know, moving through the strategic plan. My observation, looking at the document that I shared for today, is that a lot of them were kind of yes or no. Kind of things like, yes, we have wrapped the tracks, yes, we have services for the homeless. Yeah, so, which is, which is the thing, right? Like it's measurable in terms of, it wasn't there and now it's there. But in terms of what, so wrapped the tracks, is there a measure of global association with that? I wasn't sure, I don't know if there was or where that was with it. But that, I have a similar question that I have actually too. Is it just yes or no, we have this thing, or we don't have this thing? Or are there kind of things that we're shooting for that aren't tied to more tangible behaviors, actions, outcomes, beyond the yes, we've done it, or no, we haven't done it? Because there's, you know, do or not do something, but we don't know what the impact is until we measure that thing or set the goal there.
Would this be something that we would put into the next cycle of strategic planning? Or is this over and above the strategic?
I've seen it happen in the long side strategic planning processes in terms of you have the organizations I've been a part of. And it wouldn't necessarily be different than using the strategic plan and saying, okay, where are those measurable outcomes? In my sense, we just kind of start with outcomes, set the metrics, or kind of smart holding on those, and then the action plan. So then obviously, most of the time.
Well, and you'll see too that there's, many of these say, Dave completely has a specific date. But then there's, like, the actual content, it's such it's ongoing.
Yeah.
Describes as an ongoing process. But I also, I mean, I like the ideas of having, you know, kind of like, you know, as a board, you know, coming up with certain goals and then, you know, which is, which is, I think, what the strategic plan is about. I also look to, I think, Julie and the staff to help us with, what is it that would be that thing?
Yeah.
That's maybe above and beyond the strategic plan that you would like to see, you know, five years from now? Or, and then we work towards it as a board.
Yeah, it's definitely not a thing like assigning numbers to things, assigning numbers to things in order to actually have a relationship to actual things that are happening as a result of whatever, you know, action, strategic, you know, we're talking about. Are we jumping into the strategic plan?
Are there any additional comments, Ed, under agenda item number seven? Then we'll pick this back up when we get down to the strategic plan.
No, I mean, the fact that you're talking about, so I appreciate Carissa catching, you know, picking up on that point because I, I think it's a way of approaching the strategic plan. You start with the goal and then you say, and then here's the things we're doing to meet that goal. Because I looked on this list, I don't see something that says, here's the goal. Wrapped the tracks clearly is intended to try to expand the number of people using the library, but there's no measure associated with that, like what's the target? We'd like to get eighty percent of the people in the village using the library at least once a month. That would be something you can see whether or not we can do that. And you might, you might create a number of additional actions to try to achieve that goal. So it's, it's just a way of approaching the planning process.
All right, we're now on to agenda item number eight, new business, 8A, the finance policy. Give us some background on this.
Yes, we have, there are some requirements in the Local Government Travel Expense Control Act and the Illinois Wage Payment and Collections Act regarding reimbursable expenses for employees. And so that requires to have specific policies. So I put these two together to fulfill those and these would just be tapped on to the end of our current finance policy. The travel expenses, it really codifies our actual practice. This is, these are all things we've been doing, you know, we use the GSA levels, we use the IRS mileage. We always expect people to share rooms, take the cheapest, you know, take advantage of free transportation, all of those things that are in here, as well as the very specific requirement that we state outright that we do not pay for entertainment.
So prior to this, there's been no formal requirement?
Okay, yeah. And then, and then under the approval, the reimbursable expenses, there have been some changes about what is considered reimbursable work expenses. And so we need to specifically call out that we will not reimburse for any expenses not approved prior by someone's supervisor. There is some argument about whether or not someone could potentially ask for reimbursement for, say, telecommuting expenses and ask you to pay for their home wifi because they telecommuted. Because that is not a requirement here, it is actually a, some flexibility that is completely voluntary. We have called out in here that we do not reimburse for that type of expense.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in the policy that surprised me or was something like it.
None of it is really out of the range of what we do. The only thing that is actually different for us is in six point one zero point three. The documentation of reimbursable expenses is that actually in the Wage Payment and Collection Act, it specifically says that you can have a, that your employee can submit a signed statement in lieu of a receipt. I, I incur, I spent five dollars on lunch and. The updated law says that that is an acceptable form for reimbursement. We do strongly encourage the keeping of receipts however, and so does the village and their auditor.
Yeah, I'm not sure it'd be totally accurate to say you didn't have a form of policy. I recall many years past with previous board securities directors that we discussed some of these items.
Yes, yes.
They may be, they weren't formal board policies perhaps, but they were.
Yes, and there was, there was at one point a resolution about the travel expenses, but it was not made as part of the policy. So this just makes sense.
But we've always, I think, had the practice of following both the village and the GSA practices, which are a lot more rigid than back in my day when I was working in corporate America. But as a public body under scrutiny of the taxpayers, I understand that. And I don't think these are unnatural ways of it. We ask employees to travel, we have to reimburse their expenses. And we shouldn't be too stingy about it, but we need to document and prove it, unless we do it.
Is it necessary to have, you just referenced six point ten point three documentation of reimbursable expenses, but also six point nine point five is documentation of expenses? So the difference is the word reimbursable?
Uh, yes, the first part is travel expenses and the second part is general reimbursable expenses.
Jesus, it's a long.
Yeah. Well, it, those two acts are, have two separate sets of requirements. So the travel expenses, one really focuses on the travel.
Not the reimbursed ones.
Yeah, on the, yeah, on the travel expenses. The Local Government Travel Expenses Control Act. And the second half focuses on the Illinois Wage Payments and Collections Act that talks about reimbursable expenses. So each, each policy addresses the different piece of law.
Is there, are there guidelines in place currently for, there's a couple of things that are made more contemporary than the GSA policies in terms of Airbnb versus a hotel, hotel. Sometimes that's a lot cheaper, but somehow these kind of are, you know, shy with because insurance issues or whatever. Are there policies, are there even integral policy regarding staying alternatives?
Frankly, it has never come up. So I think we've tackled that one minute, if and when somebody, and we generally, generally, they stay at a, one of the conference hotels and usually they're sharing.
I just, I just don't know if that's a lot because condos hotels are huge. So it's, you know, so in terms of cost guidance, we don't kind of where that fit in here. Um, same thing was like, I didn't hear, I didn't see mention of tax year right here. And kind of where that might fit into this in terms of like ground transportation, it's not for, or is there a whole? It's not on the bill, it's not, it's not public transportation, it's other.
Other transportation.
Yes.
Yeah.
For the types of travel that our folks really do, there's usually very little of that sort of thing. They're generally going to a conference, usually driving, you know, just a little bit more inside the state. And when they're not, there tends to be a hotel shuttle that they take. I'm sorry, our sample, yeah, the sample policy that I used obviously did not address that.
If you are comfortable passing it the way it is, would I can always go back and add a section?
Well, I mean, I know it's not required by the law, I just gave you an example about how that would be addressed. Someone's like, oh, you know, I took, instead of driving my own car, I took a Uber to Almerston, whatever.
What would be the other transportation thing?
Yeah, it would really, it would really be depend on the situation and whether or not that was really that much, whether it was more, you know. Because basically this travel expense policy says the library always wins. If you make a decision that, you know, if you choose to use something that's more expensive, the library pays for the less expensive option.
And if you have to take, if you're going to Almerston, you're taking an Uber versus like, maybe the bus is less expensive, but you have to wait for the bus and you get off in somewhere else and then you have to keep moving from there, so it's.
Yeah, it's not always, it's not always a one-to-one.
He's cheater at law. I think we're bordering on like a management here a little bit. As long as we are within the customary guidelines and what you say, I don't think, I think it would be appropriate probably to mention the options of those things as long as they are comfortably expensed, comfortably priced. I'm not sure.
I love Uber, I mean, that's a good way to, that's what I take, but it's not me, you know, it's just because of the. I, I mean, I'm fine with the policy as presented and I also think that, Julie, just going back to your point of, if someone is planning and doing something, I mean, the pre-approval is kind of a critical element here in terms of being Uber's.
And we, we permit extending a trip and taking the kids along and going on vacation and stuff like that. We just pay the.
Yeah.
And that's all pre-approved and stuff like that, so.
Do we have a motion to approve the finance policy, section six point nine and six point ten as presented?
I'm to approve the finance policy sections nine and six point ten.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item 8A, the finance policy, section six point nine and six point ten as presented, that has been seconded. Because this is financially related, we should go with the roll call.
Trustee Doherty, yes, trustee Giedtke there.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda item 8A has been approved. Thank you very much.
I'll look at the literature stuff, see if there's another sample policy that's got the section that we might name.
All right, we're now on.
Just a few words besides hotel, motel accommodations or, you know, Miami.
Other than. Cycles.
It's not necessarily, it's not strictly, it's just that there are some options that you're, I'm just trying to think.
Yeah.
Well, it's a little flexibility for management, but good.
All right, thank you. We're now on to agenda item 8B, the strategic plan annual review.
All right, and I guess I'll jump right in with our public comment on, when this strategic plan was done, at the time, they chose to go the route of a more specific action plan rather than a, the, the more.
Quantitative.
Quantitative measures. That was just a decision that was made at that time. But we do have a number of these that, that have some very, that long-term impact. One of the first ones that I was going to talk about was how the collection of circulating STEM materials and combined with our innovation team to look at innovative library practices and suddenly has become our anything emporium, which our innovation team has come up with all sorts of wonderful things to include in this new special circulating collection that's our library of things. And we are circulating everything from umbrellas to DSLR cameras, STEM kits, we're going to do art kits. We've got just all sorts of really great stuff. We're circulating bike locks now. We had our first checkout of a bike lock, so, you know, it's, it's all sorts of things. And so just that innovation piece. And now we have this fantastic new collection that is being very well received. We are also partnering with a whole bunch of different organizations in a much stronger way than we had in the past. We've beat up our partnership with SCORE in order to present, to support our business development and, and job seekers. We've also started our partnership with the People's Resource Center, which also addresses job skills and job coaching and that sort of thing. And they are helping to teach more of our computer classes now. And we have an agreement with, a partnership agreement with them, so that's going fantastic. On a completely different track is the art department and helping to support arts and culture in Downers Grove. And we have had some very successful community art projects with the art department. The newest one being the weather art, the flags out in the trees, so make sure you take a look. And then, we had our very first service fair that was extremely successful this spring. Thirty-three service organizations and hundreds of people coming through during the day to, to take a look and connecting volunteers and people in need with those service organizations. So that's going to become an ongoing thing for us. And also the satellite stacks, the, that goal of better serving our senior population. So now we have satellite stacks and we are going out, Suzie will be going this, this month for the very first book discussion at one of our satellite stacks locations. So, so going so well. And staff, one of the other things that we did that's probably more quantifiable is our staff training objective as well as staff being involved in statewide and national associations and also making presentations of those. So we have staff who are going to be presenting at Swan, our catalog consortium's having their own Swan Stravaganza mini-conference. We had a number of people presenting there, several people presenting at the Illinois Library Association Conference again this year. And then Erin Lindzenmeyer in our children's department has just been accepted to do two programs at AVOS, the, uh, Association of Bookmobile and Outreach Services. It's a division of A.L.A. I came up with that, I remembered the bookmobile, so that was, that's very. So doing really great things. Don't forget, August eleventh, the new mural, so our big teen art project also is part of our, our arts and culture kind of push. So we really have made some fantastic strides, incorporated some new and innovative ideas, gotten staff involved. We're doing cross-training. Staff are able to work multiple public service desks. We have quite a few people who are cross-trained now, so that's been wonderful. We have had a couple of things that didn't go as planned. We did have the, working with local hospitals to provide early literacy information to new parents. Well, our local hospital was not really interested in doing that. So we're looking at other ways to identify new parents in the community and how do we reach them? And then also the Downers Grove Organizational Roundtable that we talked about creating. We're really not getting any traction there, so they're looking at other ways to address that goal. They've gone back and are doing a leadership cap for our local organizations and business folks that's kind of addressing the how to communicate and how these organizations work together. So just kind of regrouping on those things that didn't quite work the way we thought they would.
I had a couple of comments.
Sure.
So going first to his STEM collection, any, any.
Emporium?
Yes. So I think, biggie backing off of Carissa and Ed's comments about measurable kind of statistics and stuff. I would love to kind of see and follow this on what are the most popular kits? How much are they utilized, you know, kind of follow from that? Because I think it's kind of a huge asset that I don't know that the general public is as aware of. And I guess to follow up with that, is there a way to even do more social media posts or highlight specific programs as you've done in the past in the discoveries? Because I think, I think I went straight to meet some friends up at a meeting, I have the umbrella updated. I was at the library, so even just little things like that, people are like, don't realize the little bits of value of the library and books. That was Jen's great idea, that's about this with the, because I just, I told her, and I advertised for a week's time and everyone was telling her. We didn't. dollar, everyone was telling me, we can get the library. Um, so I thought that was cool to kind of promote. Um, because I was upstairs, I think, on Monday, and I didn't even realize some of the things that were included in the emporium. Um, the other comment was just in regards to, um, partnering with, um, more ESL-focused groups. Um, I was a tutor of literacy at Page, so it's a great, you know, partner with and have that, and I did, um, um, English and language speakers. And then the last comment was first, you can partner with hospitals. Um, is it possible to maybe reach out to the, uh, their office?
They know. That's, that's their regroup, their, their doing, their regroup is, is looking in that direction.
I know ours does, um, focus for every, you can involve that.
Good, kind of continuing, I was saying, one, one thing that I was interested in knowing more about, and again, because I didn't see the first strategic plan, so I don't, maybe this was part of it, too. There's so many cool things that you can actually do, kind of some lists of all these new programs that were starting that have been successful, you know, have been launched and, you know, whatever the goals of it is, more people engaged, more things stretched out, whatever it is, that's, that's a great kind of testament to the, the strength of the goals and kind of the strength, maybe, of the library's role. When, so, when in kind of this process do things, do we kind of evaluate what, what do we stop doing and what do we continue doing and what do we start to, because I mean, I, having been through a strategic planning process, I feel like, like, staff gets tired. Right? Like, okay, well, this thing now, the thing that I did, my, you know, for last strategic plan, that was part of my job, and now you ask me to do this, I'm, yeah. And, and, you know, and it's, it's good, you can continue to explore the options and kind of see how they, to be innovative and to kind of things, but at some point, there's so many, there's so many things, and, and some of them might not be reaching the goal that you set to begin with. And so when, when do you take that time to evaluate? And why are you evaluating against? I guess it's kind of where I go back to the, if you're trying to bring, if it's just about, it's about bringing more people into the library, that there's different things you can do to get there, and some of these things are doing it, and some of these things maybe eventually won't. And so how, how do you even know when this, when that happens?
We really did that at the management team level at the beginning of the strategic planning process and really talked about, you know, what are we doing that's not working anymore? What can we let go of to regain capacity? And so a lot of these things, there, there's been a lot of streamlining in processes, letting go of certain things that we had done before, um, and doing things like more volunteers doing the, um, homebound delivery to create capacity to get out to the senior centers, you know, things of that nature, where, where you're always looking for, okay, we can do this a little differently, or there is a new feature in the catalog that helps us do this so that this isn't a manual process anymore. We can now get that report. We don't have to create it ourselves, that sort of thing that, that have given us the capacity to do.
Yeah, just to remind you that the, at several stages of the strategic planning process, we have community forums also, where everybody usually does, I think, but, uh, I feel pretty darn effective, I think. And staff was talking about eliminating, I can't even remember what it was at the moment. They were talking about eliminating something. A bunch of people at the forum said, you can't possibly eliminate that. We want that. And so it's, it's a iterative, um, process. We can make it more, more specific.
Well, and actually, because this plan goes through 2020, um, next fall, we will be going through this process again and doing new strategic plans, so we will be able to do that.
And don't, don't take this the wrong way, but I, I'm just reminding that myself that there's a, a little bit of a balancing act between making the strategic plan real specific and, and of the management, like the management.
Yeah.
So, and I know that's not what you meant either, to, to be recommended, something like that, but for public consumption.
But I did it about.
It's, it's, yeah, the way you get there could do a number of things, depending on, you know, the management's experiences and the community participation.
Increase, more parking.
Okay, any further discussion on the strategic plan review?
Is there anything in here that you're, that is, I mean, I think there probably isn't, but any problematic areas that you want us to focus on, huh?
No, we are.
We've got very much under control.
Yeah, we're, we're doing all the things.
Good.
And, and at this point, some of, most of the parking stuff, all the parking stuff that's left is just completely out of our control. It's all to the village now, so.
But we can keep nipping at the reveals.
And waiting, waiting anxiously to see what their parking study says.
And we'll say that we need more parking. We will need more parking places. Do we know when that's going to be released?
It's supposed to be released in August.
But we are re-persecuting the place for it, so that was pretty.
Well, they, they say they're gonna do it. They haven't actually done it yet. But the new book drops.
Yeah, I saw it.
All right, any further discussion on agenda item eight B, the strategic plan review? All right, we're now on to agenda item nine A, 2020 draft budget.
All right, I was going to start with the presentation about the property tax process, and then we'll jump into the direct. Um. All right, so this is just going to be a quick overview of the process here in Illinois for property taxes, um, what that means, how your property tax levy becomes a dollar amount on your property tax bill. And, um, most of this information is excerpted from somewhere in the Illinois Department of Revenue Publications and website, so visit them for all the context. They're the best. Um, so property tax by definition is an ad valorem tax, so that's, um, based on the value of the property. In Illinois, since nineteen seventy, only real property is taxed, not personal property, so that's land and buildings, not personal property like cars and furniture. Um, those were phased out, which is where the personal property replacement tax comes in. Weird little tax that we still get, but that's a whole nother presentation. Um, so these are very, these are local taxes determined by your local taxing bodies, like libraries and school districts and municipalities. Um, and those taxing bodies collect and spend locally to provide a specific service. These taxes are not, um, collected or spent by the state. They're all local. Uh, the rules about each type of local government taxing body, how they operate, is controlled by Illinois state statutes for that specific type of entity. And property taxes, of course, by the Illinois constitution are the major revenue source for your local taxing bodies. That's the way we're structured here. Um, but how much of a percentage depends on the type of taxing body. Libraries are some of the most dependent on property taxes at about, uh, thirty, about ninety-five percent, um. About ninety-five percent of our property taxes are, um, are the, like, the libraries, property taxes are ninety-five percent of our revenue. So how does this cycle work? It's actually on a two-year cycle. Um, that's why you pay your property taxes in a year or two, because it takes them that long to figure it out and get through the process. So twenty nineteen property taxes will actually be billed in twenty twenty. Um, in twenty nineteen, you paid your twenty eighteen property taxes. So year one is all about assessing the value of property and then, um, and figuring that all out. And then year two is about the levy, the extension, the collection. That's actually getting the taxes and, and giving them out to the right people. So your year one is, the primary responsibility is with local assessors, county assessors, the county board of review, and the Illinois Department of Revenue. The year two stuff is all local taxing bodies, the county clerk, and the county treasurer and collector. So it does take two years to get through the whole cycle for a property, but both are happening at once. So here in twenty nineteen, the local assessors are assessing properties for twenty nineteen, but at the same time, the county clerk just sent out last year's tax bill, and your local, uh, taxing bodies are receiving those property taxes. So it's all kind of happening at once. Uh, and by the way, these years do not necessarily coincide with calendar years, because your levy is actually due in December for a tax bill that goes out in about May. So it's a little wonky, but that's a good way to describe it. So we'll look at each step. Assessment, um, is typically the responsibility of your township assessor, uh, but it does vary throughout the state. They assign value to every piece of property in their jurisdiction. Taxable value is one-third of the market value in most of the state. Let's not talk about Cook County, because they have their own rules and we're not in Cook County. Um, the assessors use various, um, methods to determine market value, and they generally do a full analysis on about one quarter of the property in their jurisdiction each year to meet those quadrennial reassessment laws. They do have to notify you by mail of any changes in your assessment, and they also publish those in local newspapers. And once those assessments are complete, it moves on to the review. This is done by the county board of review. These folks are generally appointed by the county board, and their responsibility is to assess any property that for any reason was omitted, um, to determine whether you can have an exemption or not, things like homestead exemptions. And the last two bullets are the most important. They ensure that, um, your assessments are equitable, and they hear all of the complaints or appeals, um, for assessments. So if you object to your property tax assessment, you file an appeal, it goes to these guys. They have to hear it and decide whether to stick with it or if they're changing your assessment. They are on a very strict timetable. All of these are on, um, statutory timetables, and so, uh, any delay in the process will just trickles death. Um, but all complaints must be reviewed before we get to equalization. And this is the process that ensures that all your assessments are uniform, so that each taxpayer pays their fair share. Within the county, it is done by the chief county assessment officer and the board of review. Um, they apply a statistical process to ensure that the properties are assessed at one-third market value, and if they find that they are not, they creep, then they use an equalization factor or multiplier to even that out. The Illinois Department of Revenue is responsible for equalization among the counties, and so they certify a state equalization factor for each county, um, that's applied to all the properties in that, in that county, um, to give the equalized assessed valuation. So final result of this whole process is what's called the EAV, and you'll frequently hear me talk about the EAV in our budget process. Um, I generally talk about it as an aggregate of, um, the village's EAV, um, but it can also be the equalized assessed valuation of a specific property. Oh, and at the end of this whole process, each taxing body actually gets the, um, official notice from the county on what your EAV is for the year. So the next step is the levy. So each taxing body determines their own levy according to the timeline set forth in the statutes, and they certify their levy to the county clerk. What funds that the taxing body can levy for and how they do it are determined by the state statutes for that type of entity, but we're all on the same statutory deadline, um, the last Tuesday in December, and along the way, there are resolutions and ordinances and public hearings that are all required to get to that last levy ordinance. Our process is comparatively easy. We create a budget and determine, um, the revenue needed to come from property taxes, and that amount becomes the library's levy request. So when you, the board, pass our levy request, it then goes to the village and is inserted into their overall budget and levy process. They do the ordinances and the resolutions and the public hearings. And at the end, the levy is submitted to the county clerk as an ordinance. Then we get to extension. Once all the taxing bodies have submitted their levies, the county clerk calculates the tax rate for each taxing body, applies it to the value of the property in the taxing body's service area. The calculation starts with the dollar amount, your levy, divided by your EAV to determine your tax rate. So, but depending on what kind of taxing body you are, there can be limitations, um, based on, uh, statutory maximum rates or the tax cap. The county clerk's office is responsible for keeping track of any of the limitations and applying them accordingly. Um, for those under the tax cap, this tax is, is a very much more complicated, um, calculation than it shows here, because the, the limiting rate gets applied and it, it's some very complicated thing. But, down, the village of Downers Grove, and by extension, the library, is a home rule entity, and that means that the tax cap does not apply. Uh, so we have only statutory maximums, which we are nowhere near, uh, to worry about. So, once the tax rate is calculated, then it's off to the county collector or treasurer, depending on the county unit. Where the tax bills are prepared, the payments are recorded, and any delinquencies are also recorded. Generally, your tax bills go out around May first and are paid to us installments. If they're delayed, you get thirty days from the day that the tax bills go out, um, to pay your first installment, but the second installment never changes. Uh, and the collector takes in all those payments and then disperses it out to the local taxing bodies, so that's their role. They also, uh, take any enforcement actions for delinquent taxes. Um, when delinquent taxes are paid, they are also in charge of distributing that money, including any interest accrued. So if we do eventually get those revenues, as, again, you can see from our revenues this year. So that's the full cycle itself in a nutshell. Any questions so far?
Could you, like, maybe, um, sample, like, I'm trying to walk, I'm trying to run one that looks like, uh, like, so there's, so you're given, so you have an assessed value, and then there's something that changes that based on something else?
Well, well, one way, can I just mention?
I have a tax bill sample to go over that shows the, the assessed value, and then it shows how, how, it walks down it.
The, the, the way that I think that, at least I kind of start looking at it from the board's perspective, is looking at EAV as, as the whole.
Sure, well, I, yeah.
Because it's like, if the EAV is X dollars and we need fine money out, whatever our, our levy needs to be, then it's just a percentage essentially of the EAV. And then the EAV essentially, like, all of the property tax, all of the homeowners essentially and businesses and everything else comprise the EAV essentially.
And we're, we're getting. What? E is for the equalized, and that's, that's their multipliers that, that magical statistical processes that happen, um, with, that's inside the county. It's your chief assessment officer and the board of review who do any, like, local-based equalized, equal, yeah, equalization factors. Um, and then statewide, it's the Illinois Department of Revenue that, that does a state for each county. Generally, we see only one multiplier, and I'll show you that, um, on the tax bill. Um, and it's usually not very much. It's, you know, three decimal places out.
It's just an attempt to, we have, we have nine townships in New Page County, and so we have nine township assessors.
Yeah.
If for any reason we get one that goes overboard on something or underboard or something like that, the equalization factor is an attempt to be able to comrade that.
To smooth down the workload.
And then the state does the same thing to you, you know, county.
That makes more sense.
That is a thing for my, in my brain.
See it, see it on the text.
It's the thing that I needed to look at.
How'd they come up with that?
And so they do that within the county, and then the state. and then the state looks at it and then goes, oh, this county, all those assessors.
Got it, okay.
All right, so moving on. So your role in all of this is one number in a really complicated process. Hey, but we do it as part of our annual budget every year. When the budget is, and levy requests are approved by you, then it's forwarded to the village's finance department. It's incorporated into their budget. Our budget request, our levy request becomes a line in their levy ordinance. Our budget becomes about four pages in their hundreds of pages long document that is the village's budget. And the village does all those fund statutory requirements so we don't have to do public hearings and such. So yay, village. And that's part of the reason that it has to be early because we have to get that to the village in time for them to go through all of that long, convoluted legal process with ordinances and resolutions and statutory deadlines of what, you can only have this public hearing after you publish that for so many days, sort of a thing. So here's the kicker on that. We use a lot of estimates in our budget because we are so far in advance of all of our insurance renewals. We don't even receive the EAV estimates for the year until October generally. So we're running on best guesses. But I do do my best to estimate all of those for you and to also go through the process to estimate the EAV and then run so that you can kind of see what the tax rate approximately will be and what the impact of the levy can be on individual homeowners. So here we go. This is your tax bill. Okay, so over here you have your fair cash value. So I tried to get as close as I could. Median home value is $340,000. This was the closest I could find on a quick and dirty search. So there you go. So it divvies it up by land value and building value and this is your assessed valuation. And if you look down here, you have a state factor is included. So that's included in your-
So that in effect raised-
Yes.
In this case, and this will raise the bill by-
By this quarter. Yes. So that's your equalization factor. And then here, this, I'm sorry, this was the local factor. This is the state one. I'm looking in the wrong place. So then your equalized value comes in here. You do have a homestead exemption or residential exemption there. So those come in after the equalized, after the equalized value is calculated. And then your net taxable value is then what the tax rate is applied to, giving you your total tax due. The printer just died. And then here on the left-hand side, you have, right down the center, this is all your taxing districts. So this is all, we've got, oop, there's the library of Downers Grove. But you have last year's rate and total tax paid for each and then this year's rate and total tax paid for each, all the way down. So this is what, this is what the residents see. This one, oh, and you can see that I took off the address and the property location. This is where the tax code would be. Your tax code actually controls what's here. And your tax code, incidentally, is also what your ballot for voting is pulled by because that's where you live. Your tax code says all of these things is where you are resident. So, um, so you can see how we stack up against rest. Now let's look at the two factors that impact your tax rate. First of all, we have the levy. This is the one thing you guys have control over. So what happens to the tax rate when you increase the levy? Your tax rate goes up. It's important to note that tax rate is expressed in mils. That is per hundred dollars of valuation. So when you actually do this calculation, there are two other zeros here that get dropped because it's in mils, not a straight-up calculation. And I don't know why they do that and they never put it in, but it's true. So these two scenarios are at the same EAV. So we kept the EAV consistent and did two different levy amounts, at a 6% increase and then 9.5. These are just for comparison. This is not a levy we are actually considering. So you go through and you do the factor and your tax rate turns out to be 21.19 cents per hundred dollars of valuation in scenario one. And that comes out to a 1.4% increase or about $3.16 increase to your median house here in Downers Grove according to this scenario. In scenario two, it comes out to be 21.9 cents, which is a 4.8% increase or about $11 per year. So about a 3% difference in your levy, about a 3% difference in your tax impact. Or 3.5, sorry. So then you go to EAV. So this one, we use the 6% levy across both, a 4.5% increase in EAV. Over here I use the 1%. Actually, that's the one that's in our financial management plan. Always says 1%, so we went better. So at that level, you still have, this one's consistent, the .2119, which is the 1.4% or $3 about in annual increase. And then in scenario two, it becomes 21.93 for your tax rate, a 4.9% increase or just a little over $11. So as you can see, they come out pretty equal.
There's so much complex demand for what comes down to be about $8 difference. For residents, just for the, like, same as from last year. So it's really hard to wrap your mind around some of the things, but the $8 is really not that hard to wrap your mind around.
Sure, sure.
Guess we can do better.
You know, most of the people I talk to-
This is all you see?
That's, that's all they see. And the rate, they don't pay much attention to. They just look at the dollar amount, last year and this year. How much did it go up or down? And that's what I hear about.
So it went up five in this example for the library, $5 more from 17 to 18.
Yeah.
And it would, you know, our budget might grow a lot more than that because the EAV went up because people built more factories and because inflation drives property values up and all the other things that affect real estate values. We get bigger, but quite a bit. Now, I don't know, wouldn't go up that much.
Although it may be interesting to note that in this example, their dollar amount paid went up. Their actual EAV must have, their-
The rate went down.
Their rate went down. So their taxable value, so this house probably got reassessed in that, in between those years. Yes, and so when we examine these potential impacts, EAV and levy are almost equal, but we only have control over one of those. And this is where we hope that Downers Grove Economic Development Corporation, Downers Health Management, the village, the chamber, all of those folks are doing a great job keeping our businesses strong and keeping the development going here in Downers because that's, that makes all the difference. So how have we done historically on this? And you have this actual, is in your budget documents as well. So as you can see, for 2019, our tax rate went down 2.6%. But we passed a 3% increase on the levy. EAV went up 4.7%. So that forced the tax rate down because the EAV went up faster than the levy went up. So that was good. We also have been on a decrease for a number of years, although you can see that our bond rate expired in 2016. So that did have a significant impact on the taxes paid. I do include this library tax per $100,000 of home value. That way people can kind of quick and dirty math what they're paying individually and it gives us a good comparison number from year to year. I always include the wage increment here as well because that is a driving force in our budget. We pay about 54% of the library's budget is straight-up wages and salaries. And this year, we're doing, we will have the minimum wage increment as well as any regular ones.
Has the minimum wage increment been built yet to the numbers that we have?
Uh, to the best of our ability so far, yes.
Well, the other, the other point, just for other, I know Dave comes this because he's been around when these numbers went even further back. But the, it's only true, he goes back further. No, the numbers for the levy, for the percent change to year, it really, if you're looking at kind of what we're doing currently and going forward, it's really looking at 2018, 2019 and then, because those years, like 2017, when we had a negative 2.2%, we were comparing that to a prior year when we actually had a bond to pay off.
Yes.
And so those other years, we have, there's negative numbers in 2016 as well, but that's because the bond was partially paid off in the prior year. And so like the years in which we have not had bond and we did not have, and we're not comparing to a pre-bond, you know, to a bond year, it was really 2018 and 2019.
That's good analysis.
Okay, all the rest is on, you're so-
The other thing people ask me about sometimes, I thought about the process a little bit. So the, the village rolls it into the budget and then people say, well, that's just, I thought the library had their own budget. I said, we do.
We do, it's just-
And I thought the library had its own budget. We do. And it's a separate item on the tax bill. We do. Then what does the village have to do? That's a question I have to answer all the time and I'm still trying to find a way to put it in the system.
They do the legal part of the process, I think, is the best answer is that it has to go to them early enough to get, to be part incorporated, to be part of the full legal budgetary process because they are responsible for the actual levy and levy ordinance.
Part of me is happy that they have to do all that administrative, but part of it is a little unhappy because people don't understand. Some people look at the village budget and it's all up or down or whatever and they think ours is too. They're just separate handles.
So the other, the other point that Julie made is that, which I think is the board, we have to approve this next month. And so we just need to be ready. I think we'll have some discussion-
Yes, that's-
Tonight and then we prepare next month to get things approved.
Yes. So we have a really, a bit of really good news. HR sources should have their kinds, their report to me next week to be able to incorporate, if not the final, at least close to the final salaries impact of the new salary schedule. So, and that will all come before you in August. But that'll at least get us a lot closer. So I was very excited about that. My apologies in the, for some reason, a couple of the headings got cut off in your budget documents. And depending on which version you're looking at, it's either 57 and 58. That's the levy at a 4.5% EAV and then 59 and 60 are the levy at the 1%. 61 is that EAV history and then 62 to 64 are the standards for Illinois Public Libraries. The graphs can represent a representation of our everything. So we do have $1.4 billion anticipated in fund balance at the end of this year. I was able to tighten up some of our numbers. We had some personnel changes. We had some insurance election changes in our poll. We also got some specific numbers for some non-personnel costs. And so this version of the expenses actually went down to a 4.43% increase on personnel side and 0.9% on the non-personnel side. So really happy we were able to tighten those up. On the non-personnel side, that should be, that's probably final. I don't think I'm going to get anything else specific before August. On the personnel side, getting this report from HR source will make a huge difference. So what I'm looking for from you is, for the past couple of years, we have used that spend down the fund balance strategy because we have accumulated a significant fund balance at the end of each fiscal year. We have been budgeting fairly high, coming in well under and then budgeting that difference toward the next fiscal year to help keep the levy low. We are significantly over our, the policy that we have for our cash reserves in the library fund, general fund, operating fund, they're all the same, whatever you want to call it. So where is, this is really my question to you. Where is your comfort level on spending down that fund balance? Because that's really what's going to move the needle on the levy, is how much of that fund balance we use.
Well, and the, I guess the point from, which is really a testament to you and the staff and how you're running the library is that you have come in well on your budget-
Yes.
On the expense side for the past couple of years. And so even though in 20, for the 2019 budget, we thought we may have to dip into the fund balance. It turns out that we probably won't have to and we probably have some cushions sort of above and beyond that.
Yes.
I will, just for the benefit of, I think, you know, obviously some of the board members are newer and I'm not sure if you've even been through the budget. Some of you may have not have been through the budget process, but we can, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of detail. My general approach is try to focus on kind of the big picture and then kind of work down to the extent necessary. And some of the metrics that I tend to really focus on are, and this isn't necessarily a metric, but it's, what does, you know, the library need to continue providing the services that it's providing? And none of these factors being kind of the determining factor. That's, you know, a factor. Then we also have, that's a, that's a, that's really the number one factor. Then you also have compensation. And as we've talked about this before, but essentially we collect property taxes and then pay about 70% in personnel costs. And so if compensation's at 3%, then, and that's what, and actually that is based on just the numbers I looked at kind of from other sources. That seems to be in line with what, unless something changes over the next month, that seems to be the number that it should be. You know, you kind of start, or at least I kind of start from that perspective of that. We need to be kind of sustainable. I like to have the, then the budget be, or the levy, essentially looking at the levy and the compensation increases essentially working in unison so we're not falling behind. So basically, last year, we went through this analysis and kind of ended up with a compensation increase of 3% and a levy increase of 3%, sort of keeping everything moving in unison. The other factor, and I know Dave has probably heard me say this every year since I've been on the board, is that I like looking at the EAV and some people don't necessarily like focusing on that because it's out of our control. But at the same time, I kind of view it as, this is, this is our population, this is our tax base. And I haven't looked, I think I've looked back maybe 10 or 20 years, as far back as I can. I can, on the taxing websites, as far as what our EAB has increased by over the long term--
Or decreased.
Or decreased. It's like, we do have ups and downs with the EAB, and so, we've been fortunate over the past three or four years, to always, we've essentially come in, our levy increase has come in under what the EAB is, and so we've essentially stayed under, like, our, the rate that we charge has essentially decreased slightly each year. But we can't, I also, it's like, you never know, maybe that, maybe the values go down at some point.
Well, in, in the great reception--
Yeah.
--of 2006, '07, '08, '09, that period, our EAB went down. Library staff, we'd done a little, but not as much as the EAB did. The price of books didn't go down, the price of gas didn't go, you know, in order to get it. Therefore, the levy didn't go down as much as the EAB went down, because, going back to my friends who just look at the bottom of their tax bill, they went up. And so, it goes both ways, and you know, there's, as a, I try to smooth out the curve a little bit. In good years, we've had a number of good years where the EAB goes up, that gives us an opportunity, choose words carefully, but an opportunity to do some things that we can't do in years when the EAB is more given, and that includes reserve funds sometimes, so that, just like your own budget, you know, if your salary, if you're on commission and you know you've got some good years and bad years, you put a little side of the good years, and you borrow some of that in the bad years. So, that's all very general, but that's kind of the way I look at it. I don't feel guilty at all, when we have a good year, about using some of that good luck to either do things that we've been waiting to do, or save so that we can do them when we have to. We have less--
Yeah, no, no, and that is consistent, I think, with what we have been doing, at least, in the sense that we've, instead of, we, we did talk, I think, back in, back at certain points about, you know, not necessarily having a fund, capital replacement fund, but then just planning on borrowing money at some point, and we decided it would be better, because we do have the ability to continue kind of a smooth path, and then putting the $350,000 away essentially each year in anticipation of these costs that we know are coming down the road. So, those are my, I mean, just very big picture of initial observations. Does anybody else have any comments?
So, what's the, talking about the risk involved in kind of either spending down, or, I guess, I kind of don't understand what the two decisions are, but what is the risk involved in kind of doing one versus the other? So, keeping more thing, keeping more money in the fund, what, what's the risk is that that we have to have a higher levy?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yes.
And what's the, what's the worst, then? So, that we do, we supplement the budget, and then is there risk involved there? It's just we have lost money to fund, and then--
Yes.
And catastrophes goes wrong, we can't avoid?
But we do have a capital reserve fund, and we do have reserves that are in that general amount. So, we're running about $700,000 over where our reserve fund says, where our policy says our reserve fund should be.
Right. So-- I guess the risk is also having to carry that forward to the next year's levy, and then having to have a more aggressive levy next year--
Sure.
--causes more attention.
Well, I do remember relative to the 2006, '07 period, when my personal tax bill went down.
May I have your attention, please? The library will be closing in 15 minutes.
Yeah.
And bring the items you wish to check out to the south door, check for the first floor services at your time.
Which I say, we tightened our--
The library will be closing in 15 minutes.
But we can't cut salaries and keep people, especially during recession. And so, we have to be prepared to have an effective enough reserve, or a customer base that will allow us to raise the levy, or raise the rates, I guess, in that case. So, it's, it's a balancing, and it's--
And I can run a number of levy scenarios for you, I just want to know what ballpark we're playing in for those. Are, is the board more comfortable? Is there a cap to how much you would want to see committed out of the fund balance? Is there a cap to percentage increase of the levy?
Well, well, let's, let's just also, just to take a step back, like, last year, we were at, I know everything is going up--
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Last year, we were projecting that we would need to dip into the fund balance to the extent of $233,000, and at 3% levy, 3% compensation increase, we're projecting not be under by $233,000, but to be over by $145,000. And so, that's why, and, and, I mean, I think last year, I actually, just looking back at our numbers from prior years, I do think as a, kind of as a, you know, just a kind of a personal philosophy and how it applies to the library, is, I think that having, if we settle at 3%, that's the compensation piece of it, I do think that having the levy at, just as, like, slightly higher than that, because, you know, accounting for the fact that, like, maybe at 3.5% was the number I was thinking of, because we're now accounting for, like, if things change from a capital needs assessment, we're just, we have a little bit of spacing in there. I still feel very comfortable, I feel very comfortable where we're at, I feel comfortable even at 3%, but I also think it's, just to take into account, I think, Dave's comments, and just looking at, you know, the future, that it makes sense, I think, to have a levy slightly higher than the compensation increase.
And the other thing that's coming is the, the minimum wage increase--
Yes.
--is going to start hitting us more down the road--
And has minimum wage increase or 3%, whichever is less, so every, in every level, there may be people who go up 5, 6, 7, 8%.
And we can't be absolutely sure what that's going to be, and so, that's the situation, that's the smoothing--
Right.
--this is, I would rather not have our levy go like this, I'd rather it be a little bit like this, which means, what I was suggesting before, in good years, that's, say a little--
Right.
Put a little in the savings account, so to speak, not exactly how much, right? Compensation's 3%, that's, that's what we're, we have consensus on, pretty much.
And subject to what, Julie?
Well, but with all the minimum wage changes and all the rest, that's, that is, that would be the merit increase for, or cost and cost of living for anybody who isn't getting an increase under the minimum wage changes. So, we do have, that's why your personnel costs are going up more like 4.3%, because those minimum wage increments are going to be higher than 3%.
And we'll have that information next.
Well--
I'll start yours first.
Yeah. I'll be able to start putting it in.
Start, yeah.
Well, and the other--
I was just going to ask you, I mean, you say four or four and a half, but you know, but that's not the, the total budget--
3%.
That's just that, right?
Yes.
And so, that's what we're waiting to see, the overall, like, 3.25.
The other, the other sort of metric that I was focused on is that, kind of the blended cost was three, or the blended increase was 3.3% for the personnel and non-personnel expenses, and that's including the transfer of the $350,000 to the capital replacement fund. So, I do feel like that 3, 3.5, maybe, and given the fact that we have to budget early--
Yeah.
You know, that maybe that's the--
I can run it--
And also--
Thank you, our 3.25, that's how we got to 2.7. More to personnel, yeah.
I actually was thinking about that, the, what's interesting is, once you start getting down to the, and I, I, that's, that's a good number, too, I would be very comfortable with that. The, once you start getting down to like the, I think it was, each percent was maybe $50,000, if I was running the numbers correctly, so that when you get down to a quarter of a percent, it's $12,500 essentially. So, not that we should always be careful with all, all of the dollars, but they start getting, they do start getting more minimal as we kind of start squeezing things together.
Let me throw back to you, but I, I like your, your logic and your numbers, frankly. Is 3.5 a number that you think we could be sustainable with?
I think that at 3.5% for the levy, we will likely dip into fund balance next year, even at the kind of rate that we've been going, but I think that's okay, because we have been, you know, we, we have been accumulating a fund balance for multiple years now, and, and I think it is a good way to, and a kind of smart way, to kind of smooth that levy over time.
As a working number, I don't know.
Right. Yes. And that's great direction for me, going back, so now, when I get the information from HR source, I'll be able to input that, see what it looks like, and if it's wildly different than what I think, I can send you all a draft, then you can then react to individually. So, when we get to our August meeting, we'll have something that's, that everybody's kind comfortable with.
I mean, anything over 2 is going to generate discussion, I should say.
Amongst--
Above the vote.
In the community?
That's what's in the community, or in, I mean, conversation, things like that, I think, just because--
Fund is sustained.
They, and, and they readily admit this, but our, the, the village council receives, what, 30 something percent--
35% approximately.
--out there funded from property tax, and so, and they readily, just tell us that we have other sources of funding, so they can hold that one down, and hopefully, we can't. So, I don't want to say that's--
The, I would, I, are there any other numbers, just, so we have the 3.5 and 3.25, are there any other numbers that, for Julie to run? Because it's nice to have them, or at least communicate them to her before the next meeting, so that we'll have them to approve--
I could, I could run your various scenarios, then.
Well, I think it would be, anything below 3.25, I think, would be risky. If you want to have a higher one, just for, for context--
Context, I would, 3.75, 3.5, 3.25.
I think you did three numbers last year, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May I have your attention, please? The library will be closing in five minutes.
Three quarters, 3.5.
Check down three quarters. Tell them to act for the first floor services at the time.
And you're accurate.
Again, the library will be closing in five minutes.
Right.
Thank you.
So, there you go, you're talking about a--
We're within $50,000. Or with less, $20,000.
Less than $50,000.
So, all right, any other comments on the draft budget? Excellent. We're now on to agenda item number 10, library director's report.
Woo! All right, well, you have my written report, please do come to the team real thing, I will not be there. I will be reminding you all that I am on vacation from August 2nd through August 18th. Yes, it's a long time, longest vacations I don't like, and--
Is Jen, Jen's going to be in charge?
Jen is, Jen is in charge, Jen! Lots of questions. Lots of questions, yes. So, I was especially glad that HR source was sending that along, when I still had a little time to hopefully work on it. Then, we're working on a website redesign, the book drops were relocated, we did not actually get new book drops, they just put decals over the existing book drops, and they look brand new, it's amazing, we love it.
We do.
And then, we are looking at partnering with Aurora University to get social work interns here at the library. We actually had somebody show some interest already, which was really cool. We haven't even gotten, so at some point, you will see a partnership agreement with Aurora University, but it's still with their attorneys. Our attorney looked at it, made some changes, sent it back to theirs, blah, 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 we're in the process. And then, we're looking at that art collection preservation and conservation, oh my goodness, those prices were a little more than I expected. And then, of course, Swan, we've done a soft launch with the mobile app, you guys were the first to hear it, they'll start advertising it later in August, but it is in both app stores, look for Swan Libraries. And then, oh, thank you, Kate McAdams returns, returning immediately on Monday. We are all in the office, grateful.
Yes.
And then, graphic and display coordinator, Melody Danley, who has been with the library for 35 years, will retire on August 22nd, so, she, off she goes, but she is, she, and she's literally off she goes, they're like leaving on vacation like the next day, so.
Oh. She's been a little by my bed, yeah?
Yes. And there are really few of those left, so that was my report.
All right, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number 11, trustee comments and requests for information. Any trustee comments?
I was--
No, I will not.
Your confirmation. I was curious, there's an email a couple of weeks ago about a page or resident who had a concern about the library becoming homeless shelters, but then I think you sort of reached out and had not got her something back, and I was, I was curious to understand on that.
She and I have left each other multiple voicemails and never actually spoken, but I did, and a couple of the voicemails gave her little other pieces of information, you know, as much as could fit in a voicemail about what we were doing, and she seemed very satisfied, and has not called back in the, the past few days, so--
You left her a voicemail.
So, I--
I was hearing.
Yeah, so, yeah.
No, I did ask Julie about some, some information about the same topic, and was very happy with kind of what the, what the goals are for that, so.
And on the flip side, we had a resident stop by the office and insist on giving us a small donation toward the little free pantry, so, we've had both sides.
Other families?
Yeah.
I think that's great. I have just two quick comments, just things maybe from the library that look into, we were talking about the bike lock sharing, I don't know how this would really work, or if it could even work in Donner Grove, having one of those divvy stations where someone could rent the bike and then ride around Donner Grove and repark it back, which they have these in Chicago. And it seems like the library, if it, if it would work, would be kind of a logical place for it. And in Chicago, they're really using them to get from one point to another, but, which would not be the same objective here, but it could still be something where maybe somebody could rent it for 30 minutes and--
Or between other libraries, Weston, North Hills, right? To go bigger, even, would need to--
Right. Thinking in Chicago, it's like train stations are like work, or, you know, it's just, it's hard to have those other destinations that are going to be 15 or 20 minutes away.
And now, they're using scooters, too.
Yeah. Those scooters are, my kids love them, they're so dangerous, it's fun. They, they don't have the stats run on those yet, because that, no one wants the stats.
But we're in Miami and Atlanta, and they're all over the place, much more so here.
Yeah.
Well, I think the bike, I saw, I'm a cyclist, like, here, and from Donner Grove, it's, it's kind of this protected bike lane, and it's like-- And it's like, it's.
The library is not closed. It's open anywhere and I may not just, it's pretty.
Oh, room, we don't know what to do with you.
I mean, it's, it's.
And so much construction right now.
So much construction, there's so much going on. So I, I love it, I mean, I love that, but in order for that to work. And that's like a Downers Grove Village kind of issue, which is, how's that work out with vehicles? So the parking issues that we have, there's always kind of heroin transportation issues. It's a, I mean, I love it, yeah.
Every once in a while that does come up on the parking and traffic commission.
Is better biking infrastructure, yeah, pedestrian, et cetera.
There's, there's discussion of that. There was a lot of discussion about that like twenty years ago. Coral Carlson, who's a member of the city council, she was aware. She really wanted, they extended the bike lanes and all kinds of things at that time, but then it kind of stalled.
Well, I think we'll hand it off to the innovation team to do some investigation.
Wish I got a bike.
With your car.
If we could get to cars, that'd be excellent.
No, let's, let's.
Can rent your bike with an umbrella.
No, the, the other is, this is, this is. This comment is car related, which is, this was a personal request from a patron who, but it could apply, this may be more of a village issue, but is, apparently Downers Grove is not, is not good, at least the Downers Grove downtown area with respect to people who have electric cars. There's like no places to plug them in. And so, yeah, and so he has, he's like, look, there's a lot of people who would love to be able to park their car and plug in. I talked to some people in the village. I said, why don't we, can we, and they said, yes, let's, let's have a library. And so. So I don't know if that's something we, just something maybe to think about or to look at. I don't necessarily want to limit our spaces any further. And maybe it could be something that goes in the parking garage or somewhere like that rather than.
We need to know if Little Fruit exists currently.
Exactly.
What a big wang bro.
Technically, we do not control the parking lot at all. We could not put one in right now without the village. Yeah, the cooperation, this is really, this is really the villages because we don't own any parking spaces.
The village has intended to write it, wants it to exist.
It seems like the, the parking garage would be a logical place from my perspective, I guess. Just putting it out there. Any additional comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. We're now on to agenda item number twelve and I will adjourn the meeting.